This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, welcome everyone to the special Marion County Commission meeting August 12th, 2022. The purpose of the meeting is to canvass the 2022 primary election. So Tina, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, did you want to do a Fox salute today?
Okay, sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just, Randy was already standing up and ready.
I was looking at you so I could see.
Okay. All right, so I did send out a packet and with yours also a part of it printed here, just the election reports. I don't think I'll go through that whole thing, but we did have a good election. It was a very busy election. We had 55% turnout. And in your packet at the back, it talks about how to, what rules we use for counting provisional ballots. So in the summary, I will go through the provisional ballot summary, which is on page three. We're printing off your printed results for you to mark on. So that's being done right now. But we did have a total, including four advanced ballots that were received either too late or with, or on time, but without a postal. So those are counted here. So we had 102 total. I have, we had three with the, that were clerical errors or just updates needed on our system. Two that did not have their photo ID, but we were able to work with those individuals to see a copy of their, to see their ID after the election. And so those should count. We had six name changes. We had three people that requested an advanced ballot, but then did not vote that advanced ballot and went to the polls. Those should count. And then we had 43 in-county moves, individuals moving within the county. So all of those, according to the standards in your packet, shouldn't be counted. And then we had five voters that voted the wrong precinct, but they're Marion County voters. So those would be partial counts. And then we had one voter that wrote, voted the opposite party. And so according to rules from a primary, that cannot be counted. We had four advanced ballots received too late. We had 15 people that moved from another county to Marion County and did not register, re-register. And moves between counties, we're not allowed to count those at this point. I will say that we're, the County Clerk's Association is considering trying to pursue legislation to change that. Since we have a statewide voter registration system, some of us feel like those should be able to be counted, so.
True.
And then we had 20 that the voters were, either they did register, but it's after the deadline, or they just were not registered at all. So the first, the next thing that we would do, unless you have questions about the report or any of the results or the process.
Any questions?
Would be then to take a vote to count those provisions that are allowed to be counted.
Okay, that'd be the top 57 plus partial number five.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve counting the top 57 and the partial next five?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Golke, is her second.
Second.
We shall approve it on the favor of discussion. All those papers say aye.
Aye.
Put those nay. Motion carried five votes.
Okay. I will get them.
So it's someone that comes in to move and up register.
So this is everything except the five partials. I'm going to keep them separate so we don't mix them in here. Do you, does the board want to open them? Do you want my staff to open them?
My staff, my staff will open them. Don't trust us.
Okay, so we'll open and just separate.
Well, that little fella looks like he's hungry. He's got big eyes on him over there. You can see that.
No.
He's hungry. I'm sure a lot of people watched this.
I bet that they would all be doing this, certainly. So they'll run these through the scanner. Any write-ins, we will record and tally and add into the results. And also any, is there any that cannot be counted?
We were visiting a little earlier about the state.
In your packet here, there was information about that too. It's likely that there will be a recount. And it will almost certainly be a hand recount instead of using equipment and having to count by hand. And, but it's unclear at this time which counties will be hand recounting.
It won't be all.
No, it may not be all. So we, and then if there is a recount in Marion County that's involved, the Board of Canvassers will have to do a sound after that to recertify that.
That'll take a while, too.
Well, no, it shouldn't, because we bring a board who has to do the hand counting. And then, so all you would be doing, that would be a five-minute meeting to accept the results and certify the election in Marion County, so. I'm going to try to update the script. We'll both at the same time, you all are writing to say that we're all, I'll do a separate copy, so I can tell if there's a problem when I open up any of our current results. So while you all write, I'm going to put them on the computer. So I did put a note in there. It would be nice for us to purchase a few more express votes.
A few more, what?
Of the express vote, touchscreen ballot marking devices.
Local dials.
And there are a lot of polling places where they have lines to use them. They cut down on the potential voter error and potential poll worker error of issuing wrong ballots as well, so.
So there were approximately 300 failed ballots returned.
Yes.
Is that, that's so, whoa, is it more than, oh.
No, that was pretty good percentage, 85% of those that requested.
Right, I mean, mail ballots, all good ballots. Books from mail.
Right, so you feel like, it depends on the election. So 2020 was about 400% higher than the election we've ever had. And that's because of, because people didn't want it.
Right.
Yeah. We have about just under 100 of those are from advanced. So those would be individuals with some sort of an illness or disability that prevent them from going to the polling place. And we send those out automatically for each election. And I think that's probably the majority of the ones that don't come back. It's probably prevented in advance. So we're going to open these. So let's look.
Got five more.
Right. And I want to open them and look to see if we can count full ballot or not. So for Scott, okay, so this one, if they voted for a commissioner or for a precinct, we cannot accept those. First, we're going to dump slow, because I want to. Okay, that one is, that's a question only, so we can count the whole thing. This one, township precinct or. They didn't vote for anything. That can be counted. Same thing, or commissioner precinct township. They did vote for a commissioner, which that one can't be counted. They did not vote for township or precinct. So what we can do is we can run it, but then we'll have to subtract one vote off for the commissioner that's on here. So Joe, you have, you want to look at that and say which vote, which commissioners they voted for.
John McGarry was the one that was voted for.
So if we scan that through, we'll have to subtract one vote from him, because they're eligible to vote. Unless you want to hand count the entire ballot. That's the other option. Okay. Same thing on this one. And they did a write-in for John for West Branch Precinct Committee. So we would just not address that write-in.
There we go, John McGarry, John Thomas.
Okay.
And then.
And the John. And that's on precinct committee, that's correct.
Right.
Okay, let's check this number.
John lost, John lost two votes.
Well, he did lose some.
They would have voted in their precinct, didn't they? They didn't vote at all. And they did not vote for township or precinct. You've verified that. So that one, if you can count the entire ballot.
Good.
So on these five, it looks like we can run everything through. We have to subtract two for West Branch on, for Commissioner Gary.
Right.
And then a West Branch write-in.
Right.
For precinct.
Yep. I was wondering, one had didn't have a cut corner.
Yeah, I just had to turn around. Which, you didn't read it, no matter what way you put it.
Oh, okay.
Ready?
Oh, yeah.
You'd be done by now.
So it went to this middle bin, because of write-ins.
Oh, gotcha.
And that's what I'm looking at. It tells us.
All right. So this is which one?
Do you want me to print the report for the write-in?
Sure. Did you save the bunch of them?
No.
So we had 18. So we had four in the middle bin.
All write-ins? Yep.
Yeah. And so I need one more, one more like that. Okay. Oh, well, that one can count. We had a few that went to the top. That just meant it didn't read them. So we're going to look and see if we can tell why. And if not, we're going to clear that bin and rerun those ones. Usually it's caused by a mark, like around the edge, or some sort of a strange goo, or something, like if it got something on it, so. Yes. Now we all do the things.
That's what you want.
Okay, and in the middle bin, there's an overvote hand write-in system.
So an overvote is just if somebody voted for too many things in one race. And what you all do with that is try to determine whether you can tell what the voter intended to do. That is. Oh, okay. This one you can tell. So we can't count this vote. With some of the different races. And these are all write-ins. Okay. All right. So we had just had one overvote.
Yep.
Great. So we have six in the middle.
Yeah.
Page two.
Yeah, lower.
Yeah. So what we're going to have to do is, did you get what you needed, Michelle?
Yep.
All right. I need two volunteers from the canvassers to write. And then my staff will write also.
It doesn't have to be reading, it's at your back.
All right.
Okay, so we go, these books are in, you're going to use.
That was me.
Okay.
I didn't realize trash bins used.
There's, okay, I just saw that. It wasn't that. These are in order by precinct. So you see the precincts down the left side, Commissioner Wheeler. And the blue is where we write Democratic votes. The red is where we write Republican votes. So does anybody want to volunteer to read, or do you want me to read?
We can all read.
Okay. So you'll need to read the ballot style and the party. So you'll need to say, this is Hillsborough Second, Republican. And then they have to get to that spot in the books. Then you'll read the race and who the vote is for.
Do we go far up?
No, you're just doing this one. Just that one. It counted everything else.
Okay. Hillsborough Second. For Lieutenant Governor, Governor.
They're not there yet.
Just hang on.
Hillsborough Second, Republican.
Hillsborough, first, Hillsborough Second, and I need Republican, right?
Yes, Republican ballot.
Okay.
And then you're going to write the race, which is the Governor and Lieutenant Governor. Do you see it?
Oh, there it is. It's the next page.
Yep.
Okay, Hillsborough Second, Republican, yes.
So you write Governor, Lieutenant Governor, or an abbreviation of that.
And the vote is for Derek Schmidt and.
Can you spell that, please?
S C H M I D T for Schmidt.
I need Derek.
Derek.
No, Schmidt.
D E R E K and Kate Sawyer, Katie Sawyer. K A T I E and then Sawyer. S A W Y E R. That's the primary Republican.
That's Katie, K A.
T I E. Yes.
Sawyer, S A Y.
S A W Y E R.
And then one.
Okay, go ahead and.
Yep.
I'm sorry, that was Hillsborough Second, right?
There you go.
That's the only vote, only thing we're reading for this.
That's the only thing on that one. So we're finished with that ballot.
See, you should have done that one, Dave. That was easy. I got mine done now.
Okay, I'm going to try to update this in as we go. So let me get there here. So everybody else that's not writing on the sheets, find that race on their tally page, on the results page. So look for the Hillsborough Second column on the front book. And then go in on Hills, that race and add a vote, just another, a little number one, like in red, at the corner of that 297 that's already there. So we know that we're adding a vote there.
It'll be your first.
First, first page, first page, first, right on top.
Those are separated by national and then.
And we come down to Derek Schmidt, Kate Sawyer. It says 297.
Yep.
It's going to be a 298 when we're done, right?
Yeah, well, unless we have.
Unless we have more.
Well, we shouldn't have anything else that attracts that. So it should be 298. You're going to put a little one by it. And then, Michelle, we really need to go ahead and run the precinct by precinct results here, so that we can officially, yes. Because we're going to have to add in all these totals to that page two. Okay, so go to results. Crete by precincts. Publicist line for write-in. That'll be a little bit faster. We'll run the other one later. Okay, so this will run while we work. Okay, so this, these are write-ins, okay? So look, on these ballots, you have to look for the little arrows that say write-in. This one is the West Branch one for John that we can't count. So you don't need to do that one.
How do you know it can't count?
Because that's the one, that was one of those ones that go to the wrong precinct. I wrote it down. So you can't count that. Do you see any other write-ins on that?
On this one?
Yep.
No.
Okay.
No more write-ins on that one, so.
Okay, two ones for John that are in that also.
Okay, we'll take that off the total results.
Second one is West Branch, and it's, there's no write-ins, none.
Okay, there is a write-in. They wrote none. So we're going to count that.
That's right. That's West Branch.
This is West Branch Republican. And the race is Precinct Committee Woman. Of course, correct?
Yes, Precinct Committee Woman, West Branch, yes. Write-in, none.
And it's Republican, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're West Branch, West Branch Republican, West Branch. Okay, we have Republican, West Branch Township Clerk, West Branch. Write-in, Jerry, J E R R Y. Last name, Toews, T O E W S.
P T is the top name, T O E W S.
Did everybody get that one?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Republican West Branch.
So, you're, Brian, you won't write those, just the people writing it knows about it.
Oh.
Sorry.
And the last one in this is Hillsborough First Republican, Hillsborough First. Uh, and we have a... Republican Hillsborough First Precinct Committee Man. Hillsborough First. Write-in, none.
Precinct Committee Man.
Yeah, Committee Man.
Yeah, I'm still looking.
Republican Hillsborough First Precinct Committee Man.
Hey, he would've written on that page already.
Should be. Go one more, go one more back.
Do you have?
See, it goes Gail Grant.
It's okay.
And then it goes to Florence First, then it goes to Hillsborough Second.
You're supposed to be on...
I do not have that page.
Okay, you do not have this page, what, I let you?
And we have one more on the same ballot, for the, same district, Republican Hillsborough First Precinct Committee Woman. Write-in, none.
Just write it on the back of one of the other pages.
Okay.
And write it all out.
Okay, there's Hillsborough First. Florence in there. Alright.
Okay, those ballots are...
No, your fault.
Okay. Okay, hold on a please.
Yep.
Okay, um, I think I might just tell you the precincts now on these, so you can just pull out the pages that you need on the rate, is that okay? So, we've got Lost Springs. Um, Republican. Oh, I was gonna tell them all to you, so you can just pull the pages out.
Oh.
So, did you pull out Lost Springs?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you've got Blaine, Democratic. And you've got Clear Creek, Republican. And then you've got Florence Second, Republican. And Gail, Republican.
And it says Gail.
Are you missing that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just write it on the back.
There you go, I was trying to save paper and not reprint like multiple sections. Okay.
Now, we're gonna read the, ever, ever...
You're reading only write-ins.
Only write-ins still, okay, alright.
So, if you see anything that has a write-in on it...
Okay.
You'll read the name of the ballot, and then the office and the name and spell it.
Blaine Township. This is the Democratic Primary Election. And for State Board of Education. Jim Porter. J-I-M Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. Okay, that's the only thing in that one. Next one will be Clear Creek Township, Republican Primary Election. Let's see. No write-ins. Pass that one. Next one will be...
It's because they darkened an oval, but they didn't write anything, so that's why it counts as a write-in? The machine counts it as a write-in?
Oh, up here.
Because no matter if they write, or they just darken an oval, the machine counts it, so then that's why it always goes to a board to get it counted.
So...
So, you won't write anything?
Won't write anything.
But this way you know why, if five didn't write it.
Okay, so, this is Florence Second, Republican Primary Election, and the same thing there has happened in the precinct office, there's nothing here to write down, but the, they darkened an oval in. For Committee, Committee Man. Okay, now we're gonna go to Gail, official Republican ballot, Primary Election. Same thing happened there, they darkened an oval.
Wow.
Yay.
Things are getting a little easy on those.
Joy dance, the dance of joy.
Okay, so...
The last one's Lost Springs, Primary Election, Republican Primary Election. And they darkened the ovals in on that too, same thing.
Oh my goodness.
So, that's it.
Well, that was nice.
Yeah.
Thank you, so the ones of you who are writing in the colorful books, if you could just take the pages that you wrote on and add up your, your votes on that, and verify that with your writing partner that's next to you, and then I can add those into the results. And then what we're gonna do, um, is we're gonna start reading, so, this is the results of everything that scanned through today, and we have to add them into these sheets. The way that your sheets are, the federal and state offices are first, followed by the county offices in the next book, followed by township, followed by precinct committee, and then the question is at the back. So, as you, one person will read the votes by precinct, you're gonna have to scan through the different sets of books as you go through, so this is the part that takes more time. You should have had the, um, we... How many pages? So, we have Blaine, Democratic, Hillsborough First, Hillsborough Second, West Branch.
Oh, West Branch.
Okay, and then I can get rid of, we're, we shouldn't need these other pages for anything, so.
There it is.
Yes, I've got, um, Blaine, one.
Yep.
Okay, Hillsborough First, none, none, one and one.
Yep.
And I've got, uh, Hillsborough Second, Lieutenant Governor Schmidt, Sawyer, one.
Yep.
And West Branch Committee Woman, none, one, none, one, and West Branch Takes One.
Township, correct.
Yeah.
Yep, perfect.
Alright. Well, did you, I don't remember right here, did you, that's okay, you, you pull, I'm gonna just add it to the bottom, but go ahead and initial, and you two verify together by touch your nails.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna have you staple them.
A lot of paper.
A lot of trees, right?
So, each of you staple yours separate, and then... And then us to initial?
Yes.
So, the first thing that I'm gonna do is, of that West, we're gonna find the West Branch precinct here.
This is in county?
Here are ours.
Thank you. And I'm going to, on this report of everything we read today, we have four votes in Lost Branch for Jonah, and that can only be two, because two of those are not allowed to vote for him. So, I'm gonna just adjust that right here, so then whoever's reading this would just read two votes instead of four, when we get there. Okay?
I don't remember team, when we do this, do we do the red team?
Were you, it's easier to see if you use the red team.
That's what I thought.
And so, what you're gonna do is you're gonna find the right column for the precincts that is being read, find the race, and add the vote to the person that's, that's red, and like we did earlier. Put it in the upper right corner by the previous votes.
Here.
Yeah, just somewhere in the box or near the box, so you know what vote, what it goes to.
Okay.
Right.
Alright.
And who wants to start reading, and who, do you wanna stay consistent, and somebody read, you know, continue writing the whole time, and then have the others take turns reading, or do you want, how do you want that done?
So it gets done.
Okay, so you're gonna, on these, you're gonna, each, each precinct is three pages, so this is Blaine. And then you're gonna, um, this is just saying how many ballots were cast, so you'll, you'll read for Democratic US Senate, and then you'll read who the vote is for. Okay? You might want your, and then just go all the way down through the ballot. We're gonna start with federal, state, and then it'll go, like I say, he's gonna read the whole ballot, so you'll have to split through all your books if you're writing. And I'm happy to read if you would rather, but...
Blaine.
Tell us what we're...
Yeah.
So, we're always gonna start on federal, state.
Federal and state.
Okay, so he'll read the office.
Democratic US Senate. Robert Clamber, one. Democratic US House, House of Representatives, Democratic, D2, Patrick Schmidt, one. Democratic Governor Lieutenant Governor.
Wait, wait a minute, hang on, what did you just, okay, I went for now.
Patrick Schmidt, there's two Schmidts on this ballot.
Oh, he said Pat.
Patrick Schmidt.
Okay, maybe that's...
So, you see, the Democrats are always listed first, the Republicans are listed second, and your race is there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Democratic Governor Lieutenant Governor. Laura Kelly and David Tolan, one. Democratic Secretary of State, Gina Repass, one. Democratic Attorney Governor, Attorney General, Attorney General, excuse me, Attorney General, Chris Mann, one. Democratic State Treasurer, Lynn Rogers, one. Democratic Commissioner.
Okay, they had to turn the page, so, alright, now go.
Democratic Commissioner of Insurance, Keel Cochran, one.
Okay, and there wouldn't be any, uh, anything else on the federal states, so, for the county on the Democratic ballot, okay, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, now the next page here that I'm gonna turn over, still in Blaine, uh... It says Write-In, one, but...
Yeah, so, we already recorded, we already took care of the write-ins.
Alright, first thing that's coming up would be Democratic Blaine. Precinct Committee Man, Blaine.
So, you'll go to the precinct book, which is the next to the last.
And Democratic Blaine Precinct Committee Man, Blaine, James A.
Schreier.
Schreier.
Schreier, okay.
Just like it's spelled.
One.
And then, the next book you go to would be the question, if there's anything, any votes for the question.
Okay, the Constitutional Amendment. For Blaine. Uh, we have a No, one. Okay, so for that one, three sheets for Blaine, correct?
Yeah. And then, see if you, on the next, uh, one, it should be Catlin.
Yes.
You can tell if any ballots were cast by, at the top, it says if there were.
Catlin, ballot's cast zero.
So, you'll skip the next three pages.
Okay. One. Three, alright, we're into center, ballot's cast, three, okay, so, Democratic Party. Democratic US Senate. Paul Buskirk, one. Democratic US House of Representatives. Representative D2, District Two, Patrick Schmidt, one. Democratic Governor Lieutenant Governor Laura Kelly, David Tolan, one. Democratic Secretary of State Gina Repass, one. Democratic Attorney General Chris Mann, one. Democratic State Treasurer Lynn Rogers, one. Democratic Commissioner of Insurance Keel Cochran, one. That's it. For center.
But, on the Democratic, you probably have some Republican ones.
Okay, that's on Democratic, yes. Oh, wait a minute, question, the question for center is No, three.
On center.
On center, yes.
But, did you, I'm sure you probably, did you not have Republican votes, because, or you might not.
No.
Okay, 'cause you might've had two nonpartisan ballots.
I did, two nonpartisan, yes.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so it's three on... On No?
Yes.
Three on No.
Okay, yep, that makes four sheets for that one, for that deal.
Okay, great.
Now we're going to Clark. And no, no ballots cast. Clear Creek. Ballot's cast seven. So, we're going to Democratic, Democratic US Senate. Michael Sotert. S-O-E-T-A-E-R-T, one. Democratic Governor Lieutenant Governor Richard Case Karnowski and Barry J. Franco, one. And we're gonna move clear down to the office of Representative, Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, three.
It's on the very, uh, it's the second paragraph.
First page.
On the first page.
Oh, okay.
It's, do you see it?
Oh, clear up here.
Yeah, for us, it's not far down. It's just very random.
And Jerry Moran, one, right?
Jerry Moran, three.
Oh, three.
And that's Clear Creek.
Yes.
Clear Creek, yes. Joan Farr, on the same office, one. Then we'll move to Rep, Republican US House of Represent, Representative District 2. Jake LaTurner, three. Republican Governor Lieutenant Governor Derek Schmidt and Kate Sawyer, four. Republican Secretary of State Scott J. Schwab, two. Mike Brown, two. Republican Attorney General Kelly Warren, three. Chris Kobach, one.
Repeat that, please.
Okay. Republican Attorney General Kelly Warren, three. Chris Kobach, one. Still in Clear Creek. Representative State Treasurer Carolyn Tyson, two. Steve Johnson, two.
And were there no votes for the Democratic candidate? On the State Treasurer? They would've been higher up under my, I'm sorry, I'm sure there were. If you didn't read any.
Democratic State Treasurer? No?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I did State Treasurer Republican here. Carolyn Tyson was two. I did that, didn't I? And then Steve Johnson, two.
Yes.
Okay, now we got.
We're still on Clear Creek, right?
Yes.
Still on Clear Creek. Republican Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, three. Republican 70th District State Rep, John E. Barker, two. Scott Hill, two.
Is Scott Hill on the next page?
No.
Is that good? Good.
Republican State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Achele, A-I-C-H-E-L-E, E-L-E, yeah. One. Jim Porter.
Wait a minute, I don't have.
It's at the very bottom. It's the very last page, very bottom.
It's the next page. No, it is not.
It's the very last page.
Very bottom.
Oh!
And it's.
Someone.
So Luke, eh, got one?
Yes, one vote, yes.
And Porter?
Jim Porter, three. Republican County Sheriff.
Okay, so go to your county book. And we're still on Clear Creek.
Yes, still on Clear Creek. Republican County Sheriff, Jeff T. Soyes, two.
It was at the very, very bottom.
Out of the last page.
I skipped write-ins, correct, Tina?
Yes.
If everybody's ready, constitutional amendment, still in Clear Creek. Yes, four. No, three. That's it for Colfax. Or no, Clear Creek. I'm going to Colfax.
Randy!
I'm going to Colfax. Going to Colfax. Moving along, yes. Ballots cast zero. That's why I wanted to get to that one.
We shouldn't be cheering when there's no ballots cast.
Yes.
Well, that's, they were, they were cast correctly.
That's true.
Now we're moving to Doyle. Ballots cast, zero. I like that, our pickers. There's still a lot of pages left underneath here, folks, just in case. That was Doyle. Now Durham Park. Ballots cast, zero. East Branch, ballots cast, two. So we're going into East Branch. Republican US Senate, race, Jerry Moran, two. This is East Branch, Republic. Everybody good?
No, not so far.
Republican US House of Representatives, District 2, Jake LaTurner, two. Republican Governor Lieutenant Governor Derek Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, two. Republican Secretary of State Scott Schwab, one. Mike Brown, one. Republican Attorney General Tony Mativi. I don't know, two. Hope that's good pronunciation.
That's how I like to say it.
Mativi?
Yeah. It, it's like going home at night and I wanna sit and watch Mativi.
He should have had a campaign slogan.
Still in, still in East Branch. This is Republican State Treasurer, Steve Johnson, two.
And Karen Tyson, zero, correct?
And what?
No, none for Karen Tyson.
No. Republican Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, two. Representative 74th District, Steve Owens, two.
That's the next page. Yes, all the way.
Oh, there we go, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Two.
Steve Owens.
Republican District, Steve Owens, two. Next one is Republican State Board of Education, District, Education, 9th District, Luke. How do you pronounce that?
Just an A.
I've been saying Ahili, but I don't know if that's right.
Okay, Ahili, two. Republican County Sheriff Jeff Soyes.
All right, they're switching books.
Yep. Looking for Jeff Soyes from the Republican County Sheriff under the East Branch, two. Representative, East Branch Township Clerk, East Branch Township, Michael J., two.
Okay, so it's in your township book.
Township books, East Branch.
And the, it's under the Republican. No. Yeah.
You said who now?
Michael J., two.
He's the, he's the one that has the actual printed numbers, under a block.
Third page. Yep.
Everybody caught up so far? Are we done?
And that was two?
Two, yes.
Okay.
Constitutional amendment, yes, two. That's it for East Branch. Going to Fair Play. Oh, no ballots cast. Good.
Uh-oh. We will.
Look like the eyes on the little. They will.
Next one, next one up is Gail.
You're still doing it.
And we have four cast, so we'll have some.
I'm sorry, Randy, I had my mouth going.
We're hearing Gail.
Thank you.
And Democratic, let's see, no Democratic, okay. Zero, 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 four down here. Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, four. Republican US House of Representatives, District 2, Jake LaTurner, three. Republican Governor Lieutenant Governor Derek Schmidt and Kate Sawyer, four. Republican Secretary of State Scott Schwab, two. Mike Brown, two. Republican Attorney General Tony, no, excuse me, Kelly Warren, two. Chris Kobach, what's his office?
State Attorney General.
Attorney General, yes. He got two. Representative State Treasurer, Republican State Treasurer Carolyn Tyson, two. Steve Johnson, two. Republican Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, three. Republican State Representative 70th District, John Barker, two. Scott Hill, two. Republican State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Ahili, four. Republican County Commissioner, District 4, 4th. Commissioner District 4. Dave Profoot, four.
Okay, so we're on county and we're.
Republican County Commissioner, yes. Fourth district. Dave Profoot, four. If everybody's caught up, Republican County Sheriff Jeff Soyes, three. Republican Gail Township Clerk, Gail Whitman, four.
And it's the black.
Republican Gail Precinct Committee Man, Todd Becker, four.
Isn't it nice when someone files on the ballot and you can just record the votes?
Republican Gail.
Wait a minute, hang on.
Page four.
Yes, and you're, and it's, so the first pages are Democratic and then you go, and then it goes Republican, then it goes down to. It is on page four.
It's Precinct Committee, it's a different book. It's the next book, Precinct, not Township. There you go, Precinct, not Township, not page.
I should just put these all together and put page numbers on the whole thing.
Okay, for Committee Man, Todd Becker, four.
Over here.
Sorry. All right, everybody on board?
Not yet.
Hang on.
Okay.
Okay. Jeez, Louise.
Okay. All right, now we're going to Republican Gail Precinct Committee Woman, Gail.
And that's clear down on nine, ten, page 10.
Laura Becker, three.
It's really a lot easier for me.
I'm glad I took it in Peter and it's actually really easy.
Now, we have the constitutional amendment question in Gail. Yes, three. No, one. Now we're moving into Grant. No ballots cast.
Thank you all for doing this.
Lehigh, no ballots cast. Liberty, no ballots cast. Logan, no ballots cast. But then we hit Lost Springs and we do have one in Lost Springs here cast. Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, one. This is under Lost Springs. Jake, let's see, Representative US House, Jake LaTurner, one. Representative Governor Lieutenant Governor Derek Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, one. Representative Secretary of State Mike Brown, one. Representative Attorney General Chris Kobach, one. And Steve Johnson, one. Oh, that's State Treasurer, excuse me. State Treasurer. Steve Johnson, one. And Representative Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, one. Representative 70th District State Representative, Republican, John E. Barker, one. Luke, Representative State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Ahili, one. Representative, Republican County Sheriff Jeff Soyes, one. Last thing for Lost Springs District is the constitutional amendment, one.
Yes, or?
Yes. Yes. One, yes. Moving to Minno. Have one cast there. Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, one. Republican US House of Representatives, District 2, Jake LaTurner, one. Republican Governor Lieutenant Governor Derek Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, one. Republican Attorney General Kelly Warren, one. Republican Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, one.
So nothing on treasure?
Nothing on treasure.
Sorry, I'm gonna be pretty questioning on that one.
That's fine.
I just wanna make sure.
Republican State Rep, 74th District. Republican State Rep, 74th District, State Rep, Stephen Owens, one. Republican County Commissioner, District 5, Jonah Garing, one. Republican County Sheriff.
Okay, just one sec.
District 5.
And we're at Oregon.
Minno.
Minno. Jonah Garing.
Jonah Garing was the last one I read for Commissioner District 5. He got one vote. Republican County Sheriff Jeff Soyes, one. Republican Minno Township Clerk Dwight M. Fleming, one. Republican--
Township Clerk.
So that'll be in the Township book.
The report change.
One Township.
At third page, and one.
Just one.
Dwight Fleming.
Yeah.
And Minno.
Still in Minno, yes.
One.
One.
Okay.
All right, moving to Republican Minno Precinct Committee Man. Richard E. Tippin, one. Still in Minno. We're still in Minno, Republican Minno Precinct Committee Woman.
How many for Richard?
Richard, one, yes. Now we're going to go to the woman, Norma Tippin, one.
Jeez, it's black also.
Yeah. And for the Constitutional Amendment, yes, one. Will be Milton Township, and... Jerry, Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, one. There must be a Republican state or county here. Republican US House Rep, District 2, Jake LaTurner, one. Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor Derrick Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, one. Republican Secretary of State Scott Schwab, one. Republican Attorney General Kris Kobach, one. Republican State--
Sorry, what's the Secretary of State Schwab?
Scott Schwab was one on the Republican Secretary of State, yes, one. Then I went to the Republican Attorney General, and Kris Kobach got one.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to represent Republican State Treasurer, Steve Johnson, one. Republican Committee Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, one. Republican State 70th District, State Representative, Scott Hill, one. Republican State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Ahely, one. And then the last one for Milton is Constitutional Amendment, yes, one. Moore Township. And we're going to Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, one.
On Moore?
On Moore, yes. Next one would be Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor Derrick Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, one. Republican Secretary of State Scott Schwab, one. Republican Attorney General Kelly Warren, one.
So was there nothing on the--
House of Representatives, District 2?
Yes.
Zero.
Okay, thank you.
Republican State Treasurer, Carolyn Tyson, one. Represent-- Republican State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Ahely, one. Constitutional Amendment will be your last item on this one. For Moore, yes, one. And Rizley, let's see, zero cast, that's good. Summit, zero. West Branch, that's where we will start. Democratic US Senate, Mike Andra, one.
I'm sorry, in what precinct is this, West Branch?
West Branch.
Okay.
Mike Andra got one. Michael S. Sorte, one. S.O.E.T.A.E.R.T. Democratic US House of Representatives, District 2, Patrick Schmidt, two. Democratic Governor, Lieutenant Governor Laura Kelly, Dave Tolan, two. Democratic Secretary of State Gina Repass, one. Democratic Attorney General Chris Mann, one. Democratic State Treasurer Lynn Rogers, one. Democratic Commissioner of Insurance Keel Cochran, one. Representative US Senate, Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, four. This is still in West Branch, Republican.
Okay, four?
Yeah, four.
Jerry Moran, four.
Back to the front page. Jerry Moran, four.
Or Representative, Republican US House of Rep, Representative District 2, Jake LaTurner, four. Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor Derrick Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, three. Arland Briggs and Lance Berlin, one. Republican Secretary of State Scott Schwab, two. Mike Brown, two. Republican Attorney General Kelly Warren, two. Kris Kobach, two. Republican State Treasurer Steve Johnson, three. Republican Commissioner of Insurance Vicky Schmidt, four. Represent-- Republican State Rep, 74th District, Steve Owens, four. Republican State Board of Education, District 9, or 9th District, Luke Ahely, four. This is where I have two red marks for Republican County Commissioner, District 5, Jonah Garing, only two.
The last two.
Who's two?
After Stephen Owens.
After Stephen Owens, Republican State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Ahely, four. I'm repeating myself again, Republican State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Ahely, four. And then I come down to the Republican County Commissioner, 5th District, Jonah Garing, and I only have two. Everybody on board?
Mm-hmm.
Republican County Sheriff Jeff Soyes, four. Republican West Branch Township Clerk, West Branch, oh, that's, excuse me, never mind, that's a write-in. Constitutional Amendment, yes, three, no, four, for West Branch. All right, Wilson, zero. Florence First, zero. Florence Second. Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, two. Joan Farr, one. Republican US House of Representatives, District 2, Jake LaTurner, three. Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor Derrick Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, three. Republican Secretary of State Scott Schwab, two. Mike Brown, one. Republican Attorney General Tony Mativi, one. Kris Kobach, two. Republican State Treasurer Carolyn Tyson, two. Steve Johnson, one. Republican Commissioner of Insurance Vicky Schmidt, three. Republican 70th District, State Rep, John E. Barker, two. Scott Hill, one. Republican State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Ahely, three. Representative Commissioner, District, 4th District, County Commissioner Dave Profoot, three.
Okay, this is Florence Second?
Florence Second, yes. Next one up in Florence Second is the Republican County Sheriff Jeff Soyes, three. Constitutional Amendment for Florence Second, yes, three, no, zero. All right, Hillsborough First is where we'll be next. Democratic US House, no, Democratic US Senate.
Did you say Hillsborough Second or First?
Yes, Hillsborough, no, Hillsborough First. Hillsborough First, Democratic US Senate, Paul Buskirk, two. Democratic US House of Representatives, District 2, Patrick Schmidt, one. Democratic Governor, Lieutenant Governor Laura Kelly, Dave Tolan, two. Democratic Secretary of State Gina Repass, two.
Randy, can I get you to pause for a moment?
Yes.
Thank you, I need to make it so I can see my screen. And would you, I'm sorry, I might have to ask you to start over at the top.
At the top of this one?
Yeah, for, yeah, for Hillsborough.
Okay, Hillsborough First.
Thank you.
Hillsborough First, Democratic US Senate, Paul Buskirk, two. Democratic US House of Representatives, District 2, Patrick Schmidt, one. Democratic Governor, Lieutenant Governor Laura Kelly and David Tolan, two. Democratic Secretary of State Gina Repass, two. Everybody ready? Okay, moving on. Democratic Attorney General Chris Mann, two. Democratic State Treasurer Lynn Rogers, two. Democratic Commissioner of Insurance Keel Cochran, two. Jumping down to Democratic Hillsborough First Precinct Committee Man, Hillsborough First, Reginald Moss. That's where we're at, we're in Hillsborough First, Democratic Hillsborough First Precinct Committee Man. Reginald Moss. We will give him two votes.
Two?
Two votes for Reginald Moss. Democratic Hillsborough First Precinct Committee Woman, Hillsborough First, Christine A. Cedarburg, two. Cedarburg, two. Did you get Christine Cedarburg get that for two? And then we're going to move to Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran. Everybody made the move? We're ready to move? Jerry Moran?
No, I'm still on Hillary Blair first.
Okay.
Okay, all right, ready.
Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, three. Joan Farr, one. Republican US House of Representatives, District 2, Jake LaTurner, two. Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor Derrick Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, four. Republican Secretary of State Scott Schwab, four. Republican Attorney General Tony Mativi, one. Kris Kobach, three. Representative State Treasurer Carolyn Tyson, two. Steve Johnson, two. Representative, Republican Committee of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, four. Republican State 74th District, Republican, Steve Owens, four. Republican State Board of Education, 9th District, Luke Ahely, two. Jim Porter, two. Then we move to Republican County Commissioner, District 5, Jonah Garing, three.
Okay.
We're in Hillsborough First. Hillsborough First. Republican County Commissioner, District 5, Jonah Garing, three. Next one I will announce is the Republican County Sheriff Jeff Soyes, four. The Constitutional Amendment, yes, one. Everybody ready? Hillsborough Second.
It's, it's, we're good now, thank you.
Hillsborough Second. We will, Democratic US Senate, Robert Klingenberg, one. Democratic, oop, Democratic Governor, Lieutenant Governor Laura Kelly and David Tolan, one. Democratic State Treasurer, Lynn Rogers, one. Democratic State Treasurer. Lynn Rogers, one. Then we're going to move over to Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, five. Joan Farr. Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, five. Joan Farr, one. Republican US House of Rep, District Two, Jake LaTurner, six. Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Derek Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, four. Arlen, whoops.
You already had one there from the right end, so now it will be five.
Okay, now, where are we at now?
We're in Hillsborough Second. Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Derek Schmidt and Kate Sawyer, four is what I have on my sheet.
But we have to put five.
But you already have a mark.
So then it will be five, because we're, we did that hand count one, and now it will be four marks.
Well, you will add four to that, so if you're using tallies, you do that, otherwise put a number five. Because you already have one, does everybody already have one there?
Yeah.
Well, we didn't, because we were, we had these.
Oh, gotcha.
Is everybody grouped here? All right. We still have in that one, Arlen Briggs and Lance Berlin, one, under the Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor, right under Derek Schmidt, Kate Sawyer. Then we'll move to Republican Secretary of State, Scott Schwab, two. Mike Brown, four. Republican Attorney General, Tony Mativi, one. Chris Kobach, five. State, Republican State Treasurer, Carolyn Tyson, one. Steve Johnson, five. Republican Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, six. Republican Seventy-Fourth District State Rep, Steve Owens, six. Republican State Board of Education, Ninth District, Luke Ahili, five. Jim Porter, two. Republican County Commissioner, First District County Commission, Kent Becker, seven. The Republican State Board of Education?
Yes.
Okay, that was Luke Ahili, A-I-C-H-E-L-E.
Yes.
He had five. Jim Porter had two. Then the Commissioner, First District, Kent Becker, seven. The what now?
Yeah, Hillsborough Second, that's correct.
Hillsborough Second, yes.
Seven.
Seven for Kent Becker. Then Republican County Sheriff, Jeff Soyes, six. Republican Hillsborough Second Precinct Committee Man.
It's going to take them a minute to get there.
This is in the Hillsborough Second, Republican Hillsborough Second Precinct Committee Man. The person we're going to look for is going to be Clint Seibel, Clinton H. Seibel. Hillsborough Second, Republican Hillsborough Second Precinct Committee Man, Clinton Seibel, seven. Then we're going to go Hillsborough Second, Republican Hillsborough Second Precinct Committee Woman, Dolores Dahlke, five. Constitutional Amendment for Hillsborough Second, yes, six, no, two. Next one we'll be in will be Marion North. Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, one. Joan Farr, one. Republican US House of Representatives, District Two, Jake LaTurner, two. Republican Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Arlen Briggs and Lance Berlin, one. Republican Secretary of State, Mike Brown, two. Republican Attorney General, Kelly Warren, one. Chris Kobach, one. Republican State Treasurer, Carolyn Tyson, one. Steve Johnson, one. Republican Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, two. Republican State Rep, Seventieth District, John E. Barker, one. Scott Hill, one. Republican State Board of Education, Ninth District, Jim Porter, one. Republican County Sheriff, Jeff Soyes, two. This is Marion North, Republican Marion North Precinct Committee Man, Henry J. Ethan, two.
It's going to take everybody a second here.
Republican Marion North Precinct Committee Man, Marion North.
Two.
Two, for Henry Ethan. Republican Marion North Precinct Committee Woman, Marion North, Rose A. Vendeska, two. And then the final for Marion North, the Constitutional Amendment, is yes, one, no, two. Then we're into Marion South. Democratic US Senate, for Marion South, Democratic US Senate, Paul Buskirk, one. Democratic Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Laura Kelly and David Tolan, one.
Who was Buskirk one?
Do what?
Buskirk was one, is that what you said? Who was the candidate, US Senate was Buskirk?
Yeah, Paul Buskirk was one.
Thank you.
And Governor, Democratic Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Laura Kelly, David Tolan, one. Democratic Secretary of State, Gina Repass, one. Democratic Attorney General, Chris Mann, one. Democratic State Treasurer, Lynn Rogers, one. Democratic Commissioner of Insurance, Keel Cochran, one. The next one will be Democratic Marion South Precinct Committee Man, Marion South. Marion South, Democratic Marion South Precinct Committee Man, Marion South is Michael Pires, one vote. Everybody got it? Marion South Precinct Committee Man, Michael Pires, one vote.
You're losing, buddy.
Got it? That's all right. Democratic, let's see, Marion South Precinct Committee Woman, Marion South, Jan Helmer, one. Then we're going to switch over to Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran. Jerry Moran, US, Republican US Senate, Jerry Moran, four. And Joan Farr, three. Representative US House of Representatives, District Two, Jake LaTurner, seven. Representative Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Derek Schmidt, Kate Sawyer, three. Arlen Briggs and Lance Berlin, four. Representative Secretary of State, Scott J. Schwab, four. Mike Brown, three. Republican Attorney General, Tony Mativi, two. Kelly Warren, three. Chris Kobach, two. Republican State Treasurer, Carolyn Tyson, one. Steve Johnson, six. Republican Commissioner of Insurance, Vicky Schmidt, seven. Republican State Rep, Seventieth District, John Barker, two. Scott Hill, five. Republican State Board of Education, Ninth District, Luke Ahili, five. Jim Porter, two. Republican County Commissioner, Fourth District, Dave Crowfoot, seven. Republican County Sheriff, Jeff Soyes, six. Republican Marion South Precinct Committee Man.
Okay, hold on a second, please.
Yep.
Let me take it so I can see.
This is still in Marion South.
Sorry, just, I'm not ready.
It's all right. Tina, we've got time for you or anybody else in here, so.
Couldn't see what I was writing anymore, so I want to make sure, so David Crowfoot was seven and Jeff Sawyer was six?
David Crowfoot, seven, Jeff Soyes, six. Right now I'm ready for Republican Marion South Precinct Committee Man, J. Robert Brookins, six. Jeremy Insley, one. Republican Marion South Precinct Committee Woman, Marion South, Jacqueline Palleck, seven. Constitutional Amendment? That was, Jacqueline Palleck had seven, yes. Constitutional Amendment, yes, two, six no's.
Yes, two, six no.
Yes. We're going to move to Peabody East. And Democratic US Senate. We blacked out.
I don't know what happened there, the computer's acting.
We're in Peabody East, Democratic US Senate, Mike Andra, one. Democratic US House of Representatives, District Two, Patrick Schmidt, one. Democratic Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Laura Kelly, Dave Tolan, one. Democratic Secretary of State, Gina Repass, one. Democratic Attorney General, Chris Mann, one. Democratic State Treasurers, State Treasurer, Lynn Rogers, one. Democratic Commissioner of Insurance, Keel Cochran, one. All right. This is in Peabody East, Democratic, Peabody East Precinct Committee Woman, Virginia Skinner, one. Democratic Peabody East Precinct Committee Woman, Virginia Skinner, one. And... Looks like the Constitutional Amendment is no, one. Peabody West. And last but not least, Peabody West. Constitutional Amendment, no, one. That is it.
Okay, so... We should go through... I just have to add one thing on here. Then we should go through all of our pages verifying what you all have for each candidate. We'll go by candidate instead of by precincts, and then we'll get the grand, the updated totals. But let me have these precinct committee ones real quick for West Branch. Okay.
I did my totals in black, because this is bleeding so bad, it's, you can't read it.
Okay. So for federal and state offices, we'll just go through that one. And so, you should have added... For Mike Andra, we should have added one in West Branch, so for total of eleven.
Where are you at now?
Top one.
I know it.
So in West Branch we added, so just look for marks that you made, I showed one in West Branch for one, so we changed his total from ten to eleven in West Branch.
Okay, okay.
And...
So where are you going to put?
Well, I'm putting it on here, so I'm just trying to verify.
Okay, but I don't have to change it here, I was just doing the totals out to the side. No?
You can do it however it works, we just need to make sure we all work by the, the total is eleven. Is that what you all have?
Yes.
Okay, so for Andra. Okay, so for Andra. Buskirk. We added one in center, it was zero, now it's one, correct? Somebody, please, answer.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we just doing all, so you're not doing all one person, you're bouncing? There was one more.
Did we have another one? Yeah. Okay, thank you. No, I do wanna do one person, that's why I was...
Oh, thank you. That's why I was like, we...
I'm confused.
Anybody East?
We're sent to rules.
We should have four now, is that correct? For total of...
Team, team, let's turn this over to Tina. Now Tina, you're in charge, no, no, just go right ahead.
I need the team to tell me, so total is ninety-one, yes?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, now let's go back to the next one. So, we updated...
You're on Buskirk?
Yeah, we're on Buskirk.
Center.
Okay. And then Hillsborough first, we would go from six to eight.
Right.
And Marion South, go to eleven, right? Yes, ninety-four total. Holland? Let's make sure I don't have anything... So his total was one fourteen? Klingenberg, in Blaine, we added one, correct? So then we go eight? Any others?
Just that second.
I just want to...
Okay, so we have ten. Total one thirty-five?
Yes.
Sotard. We added one in Clear Creek? And West Branch?
Yes.
Any others? Total thirty-seven?
Yes.
Weisner, I don't believe we added anything to him. So his total sixty-two?
Yes.
Okay, then if we go to Jerry Moran, we added three in Clear Creek?
Yes.
Total one fifteen?
Yes.
Two in East Branch?
Yes.
Total fifty-seven. Four in Gale?
Yes.
Total sixty-six. Lost Springs, one?
Yes.
Total forty-five. Minno, one?
Yes.
Total ninety-nine. Milton, one, total fifty-five? Moore, one? Total twenty-three? West Branch, four? Total two hundred? Florence Second, two? Total thirty-eight? Hillsborough First, three? Total two eighty? And Hillsborough Second? Five, total three fifteen? Marion North, one? Total one eighty-seven? Marion South, four? Total one ninety-seven? And that's it. Did anybody get an updated total?
I have two.
Two seven oh five, yeah, okay. Joan Farr? One in Clear Creek? One in Florence Second? One in Hillsborough First? And one in Hillsborough Second? And one in Marion North? Three in Marion South? And that's it? Four two four? Now the alternate, are you guys okay with doing it this way? Alternate, we can... Break and... Add them together without you all, but... I mean, if we are good with this, let's, we can keep going. Okay, so in Patrick Schmidt, we had one in Blaine for a total of ten. And one in Clark? Total sixteen? Oh no, that's not right, sorry. Center, yeah, total sixteen. Did we have any others? Uh, West Branch, right? So total sixty-two? Hillsborough First, one, total forty-three? Peabody East, one, total twenty-seven? Total five fifteen? Jake LaTurner? Three in Clear Creek? Total one oh six? I should have highlighted these. East Branch? Uh, two, total fifty-six? One in Lost Springs?
Three in Gale.
Okay, let me go back. It's getting hard to see on here.
Yeah. Hard to see up there even.
Yeah, so, uh, three in Gale, so that'd be total sixty-two. And then Lost Springs? The previous total was forty-six, right? So we have it to forty-seven. And Minno, we have one, total ninety-two? Milton, one, total fifty-eight? West Branch, four, total two oh five? Florence Second, three, total thirty-eight? Hillsborough First, two, total two eighty-five? Hillsborough Second? Is that six? Total three nineteen?
Yes.
Marion North, two, total one ninety-nine? And then, Marion South was seven, total two of two? Total two seven four one? Alright. If somebody else wants to read the... I mean, that'd be fine where I can, so.
I'll read, if I have any ones.
Good.
Laura Kelly, Blaine, one, so it goes from seven to eight. Laura Kelly, Center, one, goes from fifteen to sixteen. West Branch, Laura Kelly, two, seventy-three to seventy-five. Hillsborough First, two, forty-six to forty-eight. Hillsborough Second, one, forty-eight to forty-nine. Marion South, one, forty-six to forty-seven. And Peabody East, one, thirty to thirty-one.
Total five eighty-two? If anybody got the totals, just if I say a total, you can just say yes. Did anybody do that total?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Richard Sartowski, one in Clear Creek, so it just went one to two. And the total just goes up one from forty-seven to forty-one. Republican Governor? I've got four in Clear Creek? One oh one to one oh five? I've got two in East Branch, fifty to fifty-two? In Gale, four, fifty, four to fifty-eight? Lost Springs, one, forty-one to forty-two? Minno, one, eighty-four to eighty-five? Milton, one, fifty-four to fifty-five? Moore, one, twenty-one to twenty-two? West Branch, three, one eighty to one eighty-three? Florence Second, three, twenty-nine to thirty-two? Hillsborough First, four, two fifty-four to two fifty-eight? Hillsborough Second, I think it's a five?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Two ninety-seven to three oh two? Marion North, three, one seventy-two to one seventy-five, I did not have a total.
Okay, I did twenty-five forty-one? Did anybody verify that? Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Arlen Briggs, Lance Berlin? West Branch, there's one, forty-three to forty-four? Hillsborough Second, one, forty-two to forty-three? Marion North, one, forty-four to forty-five? Marion South, four, fifty to fifty-four?
Five oh three? Okay, oh, that's great, Brian. If you just said the total, it's great.
Had that one.
Okay.
Secretary of State, Democrat, Repass? Blaine, one, goes from nine to ten? Center, one, fourteen to fifteen? West Branch, one, sixty-one to sixty-two? Hillsborough First, forty-six to forty-eight? Marion South, one, forty-three to forty-four? Peabody East, one, twenty-seven to twenty-eight?
Five twenty-six and four oh six.
Republican Secretary of State, Scott Schwab? Let's get another seat a lot in Clear Creek, two, seventy-four to seventy-six? East Branch, one, thirty-eight to thirty-nine? Gale, two, thirty-seven to thirty-nine?
Okay.
Milton, one, thirty-three to thirty-four? Moore, one, fifteen to sixteen? West Branch, two, one forty-three to one forty-five? Florence Second, two, twenty-six to twenty-eight? Hillsborough First, four, one seventy-nine to one eighty-three? Hillsborough Second, two, one seventy-nine to one eighty-one? Marion South, four, one twenty-four becomes one twenty-eight?
Seventeen fifty-four, right?
Kansas Secretary of Attorney State, Mike Brown? Clear Creek, two, forty-one to forty-three? East Branch, one, nineteen to twenty? Gale, two, twenty-seven to twenty-nine? Lost Springs, one, eleven to twelve? West Branch, two, seventy-one to seventy-three? Florence Second, one, ten becomes eleven? Hillsborough Second, four, one forty-two becomes one forty-six? Marion North, two, ninety becomes ninety-two? Marion South, three, ninety-one becomes ninety-four?
Total one thousand one thirty-four, right?
Attorney General, Democratic candidate? Blaine, one, nine becomes ten? Catlin, one, eight becomes nine?
Do we have one in Catlin?
Nope.
I don't think so.
Oops.
Oh, yep, Center.
Center, I had it in the wrong column.
So it'd be fifteen goes to sixteen?
Fifteen goes to sixteen, it's Center. West Branch, one, sixty to sixty-one? Hillsborough First, two, forty-nine to fifty-one? Marion South, one, forty-one to forty-two? Peabody East, one, twenty-nine to thirty?
Yes, five three oh three?
Attorney General, Republican? Not TV? Watching TV? East Branch, two, nine becomes eleven? Florence Second, one, seven becomes eight? Hillsborough First, one, sixty-five becomes sixty-six? Hillsborough Second, one, sixty-one becomes sixty-two? Marion South, two, forty-seven becomes forty-nine?
Six twenty-eight.
Attorney General, Kelly Warren? Clear Creek, three, thirty-nine becomes forty-two? Gale, two, nineteen becomes twenty-one? Minno, one, thirty-three becomes thirty-four? Moore, one, six becomes seven? West Branch, two, seventy-four becomes seventy-six? Marion North, one, seventy-four becomes seventy-five? Marion South, three, eighty-nine becomes ninety-two?
Seven oh three, seven? Yes, seven oh three.
Kris Kobach? Cold, flat, no, Clear Creek? Clear Creek, one, sixty-six becomes sixty-seven? Gale, two, thirty-four becomes thirty-six? Lost Springs, one, thirty becomes thirty-one? Milton, one, twenty-nine becomes thirty? West Branch, two, eighty-nine becomes ninety-one? Florence Second, two, seventeen becomes nineteen? Hillsborough First, three, one thirteen to one sixteen? Hillsborough Second, five, one, uh, one thirty-eight becomes one forty-three? Marion North, one, one oh two into one oh three? Marion South, two, ninety becomes ninety-two?
Thirteen thirty-two, so, okay.
Keep going?
Yeah, very okay.
Yep. Kansas State Treasurer, Democrat, Lynn Rogers, Blaine was one, nine becomes ten? Center, there was one, thirteen becomes fourteen? West Branch, one, fifty-nine becomes sixty? Hillsborough First, two, forty-six becomes forty-eight? Hillsborough Second, one, forty-one becomes forty-two? Marion South, one, forty-two becomes forty-three? Peabody East, one, twenty-eight becomes twenty-nine?
Uh, twenty-nine.
Kansas State Treasurer, Republican, Tyson? Clear Creek, two, thirty-eight becomes forty? Gale, two, thirty becomes thirty-two? Moore, one, five becomes six? Florence Second, two, sixteen becomes eighteen?
Got it? Okay.
Hillsborough?
And two? There we go.
Okay, that was Florence Second, two, sixteen becomes eighteen? Hillsborough First, two, ninety-eight becomes one hundred? Hillsborough Second, one, one eleven becomes one twelve? Marion North, one, one oh one becomes one oh two? Marion South, one, eighty-seven becomes eighty-eight?
Okay, yes.
Stephen Johnson, Clear Creek, two, seventy-nine becomes eighty-one? East Branch, two, thirty-four becomes thirty-six? Gale, two, thirty-eight becomes forty? Lost Springs, one, twenty-nine becomes thirty? Milton, one, twenty-six becomes twenty-seven? West Branch, three, one thirty becomes one thirty-three? Florence Second, one, twenty-one becomes twenty-two? Hillsborough First, two, one seventy-eight becomes one eighty? Hillsborough Second, five, two ten becomes two fifteen? I've gotta square Hillsborough First, is there one there?
One.
There is one. Okay, Marion North, one, one oh seven becomes one oh eight? Marion South, six, one twenty-four becomes one thirty?
Seventeen sixty-seven.
State Insurance Commissioner, Democrat, Corcoran? Blaine, one, eight becomes nine? Center, one, fourteen becomes fifteen? West Branch, one, fifty-nine becomes sixty? Hillsborough First, two, forty-five becomes forty-seven? Marion South, one, forty becomes forty-one? Peabody East, one, twenty-seven becomes twenty-eight?
I go three?
Republican, Schmidt. Clear Creek, three, one oh-six becomes one oh-nine. East Branch, two, fifty-five becomes fifty-seven. Gale, three, sixty-one becomes sixty-four. Lost Springs, one, forty-five becomes forty-six. Menno, one, ninety-five becomes ninety-six. Milton, one, fifty-five becomes fifty-six. West Branch, four, two-ten becomes four, two fourteen. Florence second, three, thirty-six becomes thirty-nine. Hillsborough first, two seventy-seven becomes two eighty-one. Hillsborough second, three-ten becomes three sixteen. Marion north, one ninety-one becomes one ninety-three. Marion south, seven, two oh-one becomes two oh-eight.
Two seven, two eight.
Okay.
Okay.
Calculate.
Oh, that's all right, let's just go, let's just go through totals to make sure. Um, I'm just gonna go across, starting with Blaine. Uh, forty-three, fifty-five, one sixty-nine, thirty-five, one oh-nine, thirty-five, seven, forty-five, fifty-seven, thirty-five, sixty-four, thirty-two, sixty-two, one oh-nine, seventeen, forty-six, ninety-six, fifty-six, twenty-one, eighty-eight, twenty-one, two fourteen, sixty-four, thirty-three, thirty-nine, two eighty-one, three sixteen, one ninety-three, two oh-eight, seven, seventy-eight, one hundred. Did you get twenty-seven thirty-five? Oh, you stopped. That's all right.
Well, no, I got a couple less.
Okay. I, if our numbers are totaling across, it's the same, I think, or...
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Is that thirty-five? Uh, twenty-seven, thirty-five. So you're seven off. So, maybe I did something wrong.
Well, maybe that was, uh, maybe I didn't count.
Okay, so, originally Marion south was what, on your paper?
Two oh-one.
Two oh-one.
Okay, so, I, it should be, I didn't take it out, so now it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight is the total here. Okay, that's pretty important today.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll just keep totaling about that. Okay, US, uh, so how, State Rep-
State Rep, Seventh District, Clear Creek, uh, I'll start with John Barker. Clear Creek, two, sixty-two becomes sixty-four. Gale, two, thirty-one becomes thirty-three. Lost Springs, one, nineteen becomes twenty.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yeah, Lost Springs, one, nineteen becomes twenty. Florence second, two, sixteen becomes eighteen. Marion north, one, one oh-nine becomes one ten. Marion south, two, ninety-one becomes ninety-three.
Six twenty-seven.
Seventh District, Scott Hill, Clear Creek, two, sixty becomes sixty-two. Gale, two, forty-four becomes forty-six. Milton, one, thirty-eight becomes thirty-nine. Florence second, one, twenty-six becomes twenty-seven. Marion north, one twelve, one, so one twelve becomes one thirteen. Marion south, five, one thirty-two becomes one thirty-seven.
Seven fifty-nine.
Seventy-fourth District. Steve Owens, East Branch. Two, uh, fifty-seven becomes fifty-nine. Menno. One, ninety-four becomes ninety-five. West Branch. Two, uh, four, two oh-seven becomes two eleven. Hillsborough first, four, two eighty-four becomes two eighty-eight. Hillsborough second, six, three twenty-two becomes three twenty-eight. State Board of Education, Ninth District. Uh, Clear Creek, one, uh, seventy-nine becomes eighty. East Branch, two, thirty-eight becomes forty. Gale, four, forty-three becomes forty-seven. Lost Springs, one, twenty-five becomes twenty-six. Milton, one, thirty-two becomes thirty-three. Moore, one, twenty becomes twenty-one. West Branch, four, one nineteen becomes one twenty-three. Florence second, three, twenty-one becomes twenty-four. Hillsborough first, two, two oh-eight becomes two-ten. Hillsborough second, five, two forty-five becomes two fifty. And Marion south, five, one twenty-four becomes one twenty-nine.
That's what I have, yes.
Jim Porter, Clear Creek. Three, thirty-one becomes thirty-four. Hillsborough first. Two, seventy-seven becomes seventy-nine. Hillsborough second, two, seventy-nine becomes eighty-one. Marion north, one, eighty-nine becomes ninety. Marion south, two, ninety-four becomes ninety-six.
Nine six four?
Yep.
Yay!
Okay, County Commission, District one, Kent Becker, Hillsborough second. Seven, three nineteen becomes three twenty-six. That's all I had on my papers.
Five four six. Okay.
Commission, District four, Dave Crowe, Gale Township, four, sixty-six becomes seventy. Florence second, three, thirty-six becomes thirty-nine. And Marion south, seven, two-ten becomes two seventy.
Yes, six thirty. Randy, thanks for watching what I'm doing there. Can you see it well enough?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. All right.
County Commission, District five, Jonah Garen. Cabano Township, one, one hundred becomes one oh-one. West Branch, two, two twelve becomes two fourteen. And Hillsborough first, three, two eighty-nine becomes two ninety-two.
Six oh seven.
Sheriff's Race. Jeff Soylans, Clear Creek, two, one eighteen becomes one twenty. East Branch, two, fifty-seven becomes fifty-nine. Gale, three, seventy-two becomes seventy-five. Lost Springs, one, forty-seven becomes forty-eight. Milton, one.
Oh, is that Menno? Menno is one?
I did not have any in Menno.
Menno, I have Menno one.
Okay, so, Menno was one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sorry. Menno, one, one hundred.
And I did not have any in those.
Ah, okay, so I missed, uh, that's two up top, at least.
Well, that's pretty hard to write in that type of space.
Well, when it's at the bottom.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, West Branch, four, two fifteen to two nineteen. Florence second, three, thirty-seven to forty. Hillsborough first, four, two eight, two eighty-three to two eighty-seven. Hillsborough second, six, three twenty-three to three twenty-nine. Marion north, two, two seventeen to two nineteen. And Marion south, six, two eighteen, two twelve to two eighteen.
Twenty-nine oh two is what I got. Okay, guys, um... Just gonna highlight this real quick.
Sure.
If we only have East Branch, or what do we have one?
East Branch.
Gale.
Town-
Oh, Gale, yeah, okay, got it. Okay, this'll make it a little easier. All right, ready?
Okay, so, East Branch. Uh, Michael J., two, fifty-eight to sixty.
Total sixty?
Yes. Gale. Gale, Gale.
Gale, Dwight Fleming.
Four, uh, seventy-two becomes seventy-six.
And total seventy-six?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, uh, Menno. Stop it, I'm already ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, Menno Dwight Fleming, one, one oh-three becomes one oh-four. That's it.
And the total's one oh-four, okay. What are you looking to then?
Recent.
Okay.
Democrat. Blaine. Recent Committee Man, James Schreier, one. Goes from nine to ten.
And total was ten.
Okay, Democrat Committee, Recent Committee Man, Hillsborough first. Reginald Mox, two, forty-two becomes forty-four.
And total's forty.
Correct. Marion south.
Uh, we don't have any women on that one?
Uh, can I?
Yeah, that's fine.
Finish the name?
Yep, sure.
Uh, Marion south, Committee Man, Michael Powers, one, forty-four to forty-five. Now, Democrat, Recent Committee Women. Hillsborough first, Christine Cedarburg, two, forty-six becomes forty-eight.
Okay.
Marion south, Janet Kilmer, woman, forty-six becomes forty-seven.
Okay.
Peabody east, Virginia Skinner, one, twenty-nine becomes thirty.
Okay.
Okay, the next one I've got is Republican, Recent Committee Man, Grant, uh, sorry, Gale.
Okay.
Todd Becker, four, fifty-six becomes sixty.
Okay.
Next one I have is Hillsborough second, Committee Man, Clint Sible, become, uh, seven, three twenty-five becomes three thirty-two.
All right, just a second here. Okay.
Uh, this would be Marion north. Henry Ethan, two, one seventy-eight which one eighty.
Okay, just a second here. Okay.
Marion south.
Okay.
Paul Brookins, six, one twenty-nine becomes one thirty-five.
Okay.
Marion south, Jeremy Enzie, one, one oh-three becomes one oh-four.
Okay.
Menno.
Yep.
Richard Tippin, one, ninety-five becomes ninety-six.
Okay.
Next one I have is Gale, Uncommittee Women.
Okay.
Laura Becker, three, fifty-four becomes fifty-seven.
Okay.
Hillsborough second, Dolores Stalkie, five, three twenty-two becomes three twenty-seven.
Yes. Okay.
Marion north, uh, Rose Vindeska, two, two oh-five becomes two oh-seven.
Okay.
Marion south, Jacqueline Pelig, seven, two oh-seven becomes two sixteen.
Uh, so it's two oh-nine?
Two oh-nine.
Yeah, so two-
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so two sixteen is the correct total, right?
Sorry, just add seven.
No, you're good, yeah.
Two oh-nine, two sixteen.
That, my brain just stopped for a second, it's good, it's back.
It's off board. Menno, Morgan Tippin, one, ninety-four to ninety-five.
Okay.
That's why we have a bunch of people there.
That's right, that's great.
And that is all I have.
Okay.
Unless someone else will please come in. So then, just a special question?
Yes.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go with the yeses. Clear Creek, four, three thirteen to three seventeen.
Oh, wait. Just a second.
Clear Creek.
Sorry. Okay, you said three thirteen, but I had a hundred and thirteen.
Oh.
Okay, so it's one, I just wanted to make sure, I thought maybe I did something wrong. Okay, so one seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, great.
East Branch, two, fifty-two is fifty-four.
Okay.
Gale, three, fifty-nine becomes sixty-two. Lost Springs, one, forty-seven becomes forty-eight. Menno, one, ninety becomes ninety-one. Milton, one, sixty becomes sixty-one. Moore, one, nineteen becomes twenty. West Branch, three, one ninety becomes one ninety-three. Florence second, three, twenty-two becomes twenty-five. Hillsborough first, one, two seventy becomes two seventy-one. Hillsborough second, six, three seventeen becomes three twenty-three. Marion north, one, one seventy-three becomes one seventy-four. Marion south, two, one forty-three becomes one forty-five.
Yes, and my total's two thousand five sixty-seven.
And those. Blaine, one, eighteen becomes nineteen. Center, three, eighty-eight becomes ninety-one. Clear Creek, three, forty-six becomes forty-nine. Gale, one, fifty-three becomes fifty-four. West Branch, four, one eighty becomes one eighty-four. Hillsborough first, seven, one thirty-nine becomes one forty-six. Hillsborough second, two, one thirty-five becomes one thirty-seven. Marion north, two, one seventy-four becomes one seventy-six. Marion south, six, one eighty-six becomes one ninety-four. Peabody east, one, eighty-two becomes eighty-three. Peabody west, one, ninety-seven becomes ninety-eight.
Seventeen oh three. All right, I might have take, not taken something out. Okay, so let's go through the different numbers, I'm sorry, just, so Blaine nineteen, Catlin twenty-two, Center ninety-one.
Right.
Clark twelve, forty-nine.
Yes.
Twenty-three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Twenty-one.
Yes.
Thirty.
Yes.
Fifteen.
Yes.
Fifty-four.
Yes.
Twenty-three.
Yes.
Thirty-one.
Yes.
Fifty.
Yes.
Nine.
Yes.
Thirteen.
Yes.
Fifty-four.
Yes.
Twenty-one.
Yes.
Eleven.
Yes.
Thirty-three.
Yes.
Twelve.
Yes.
One eighty-four.
Yes.
Twenty-three.
Yes.
Twenty-six.
Yes.
Thirty-nine.
Yes.
One thirty-seven.
Yes.
One seventy-six.
Yes.
Not, one ninety-four.
Yes.
Eighty-three.
Yes.
Ninety-eight.
Yes. I think it's Marion south or south, I think I messed it.
Marion south, I have, what was the original number?
One eighty-six. Plus two.
I thought it was.
Six.
Plus six.
Oh, was it plus, oh, it is plus six.
Sixty-one and I would have.
One ninety-two.
Oh, not one one ninety-four.
Oh, I can do it all now.
That's all right, I didn't, I didn't, uh, all right, so seventeen oh one?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Okay, so, it's gonna take us a couple minutes to print this, on the right type of paper. And to square everything back up after adding in. I did add those write-ins. Um, you, I wanted, I did wanna go over on the county, on the write-ins for Township Clerk. You have to have at least three votes to be able to be nominated, to be on the ballot in November as Township Clerk.
Mm-hmm.
And so on here, I did highlight, or I did bold the ones that appear to be, uh, the nominees. And, uh... I guess I should highlight them. Michelle, which ones are those? For the, oh, I'm- For the, oh, I'm on the wrong thing, that's why. Township?
Township Office, please.
Can you, Darren Park, Robert L. Klein?
Uh, that's, is that the write-in one? Okay, yes.
Oh, the write-ins, okay, Peabody, Sean. Doyle, Kathy Inlow. Lost Springs, Frank Burks. West Branch, John Henry.
And also, in West Branch, we also had Bernie Boath.
Yep.
So that's a tie, however, Bernie Boath is the trustee, is that right? Michelle, does he have?
He is the trustee.
So technically, we probably, you know, you probably have a, have to do a tiebreaker. And then if Bernie gets it, he'd have to either decline it or accept the nomination, so.
Also, Frank Burks and Kathy Inlow are already in positions also.
Yeah, but there's not a tie there.
Yeah.
And so we can't automatically disqualify someone that is already in a different position, they're just gonna have to decline the nomination or, um, be on the ballot and then decline one of the positions, I believe.
And Wilson, James Lowen.
So Michelle, do you want to go ahead and make a little paper ticket for Bernie Boath and John Henry, so they can do the tiebreaker perfectly? And then on the precinct committee, these folks are actually elected in the primary, and they take office as soon as, as soon as the results are certified. And you have to receive, if you don't file, you have to, to be, uh, elected as a primary, and you have to receive at least five votes as a precinct person. So we'll go through those next. So, did you get Bernie Boath and, uh, John Henry on there?
These were all provisional votes or ballots, that's what caused all this paperwork.
Yes, buddy, did you get them in something we can draw one? You can just hold them upside down and let somebody draw one. Who wants to volunteer to be the tiebreaker? You?
I have John Henry.
Okay, so let's mark, we'll mark him, Michelle, as the nominee, and this is. Okay, and then I'm gonna have this, uh, Michelle, do you want to go through the precinct committee that looks, that appears to be nominated by Ryan?
Yep. East Branch, Scott Smith. They, they have to have five or over. And Liberty, Jenna Dickerson. East Branch, Committee Woman, Brady Smith.
So Jenna Dickerson was actually nominated for the precinct committee man, she didn't receive enough for the precinct committee woman and that. So, I don't know the rules on that, but that's who the nominee was, and we'll find out from the party.
Yeah, because she was the first committee man.
I think that. You know, she would get it, but I guess she can decline. That's great.
I don't, I don't, after watching any of, uh, things we've had, like, can't get elected, uh, this other few people get elected. I, I'm surprised that a man and a woman can hold in the same precinct, can hold that.
You mean like a husband and wife?
Husband and wife, yeah, can hold the parties, because, sure, when you get to the final count, most people got to vote, who's gonna sit there? And very seldom, a husband and wife can sit there.
My wife hasn't been.
Well, yeah.
She's not gonna vote Trump ever.
Never?
Never.
So, but it is just what I've seen, though, is.
Yeah, you're right.
What I've seen in elections is so far, I don't know, it's not quite, that's, that's what you, it's not quite right. Oh, I'm not gonna say that, yeah.
Two people.
Yeah.
Michelle, sign this. It doesn't, I know there's not an embrace, it's just sign the seal so that we can put, uh, we have to seal these ballots, and then they can't be opened unless there's an order for recount or a court order, so.
And you got everything you needed on that one close race that you wanted?
I just wanted to make sure that when we were reading, we didn't miss anything, so.
The treasure.
Very good.
Eleven seventeen, I need to reprint these, and then there's a certification that you'll sign. If I could just print the certification, would you sign that?
Definitely.
If you would like, okay. I won't be changing totals, just spacing and printing it on the correct paper, so let me get that.
And those are papers, you can leave that here?
Yes. If you could put your name on it, on the front of your vote, I'll put it.
Should've just crossed it out, so you guys could have more room.
Well, not when we do it, when we don't, if we don't have a Democrat on the board, we just use the two lines, we don't worry about what race we are.
Hold the candle. Sorry.
Hands are smarter.
All the reason I know is because mine's not open, so I can see the words.
Well, David, it was like what you said when she come in with that, and she was halfway down or a little over.
I'm the reason why we had to have the restroom.
She could tell you were full. You gotta send the insecurities.
Light's going off.
Okay, here's, uh, if you'd make a motion and a vote to certify the totals as finalized, I think that would be great, can you sign off on that?
I would move that we certify the results, the Board of Canvassor certify the results, primary election, August second, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Oh, second, please.
Second by Commissioner Croft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you again for all your work, successful election. Now, comes the general.
Yes, and we've already got deadlines in, that are this week for the general election, right, Michelle?
Yeah.
We'll see how the.
I don't know, but yeah, I know.
It, it's not gonna be happening.
Deadline is this week?
We're the only one.
Well, there's, no, there's, they're just being a little too aggressive on their deadlines, nobody's done, so.
Well, I got on, I have org to start working on it, it's not even up there, so.
So anyway, we'll be starting next week. And hopefully, I'll let you know if we're gonna have a recount or not. The deadline, well, for a local recount would be five o'clock today, tomorrow, and I think that's actually the deadline. To, five o'clock today might be the deadline for the state, I heard, so.
Yeah.
Well, let you know.
Very good. Motion to adjourn. Okay, motion to adjourn by Commissioner Dalton, is there a second? Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, we are adjourned, again, thank you for your help today, appreciate it.
You guys want these too?
Yes.
I can just, Nick, you can go back, you can get next one.